All right, we'll call the April 8th work session of the Site Plan Review Technical Advisory Committee Meeting to Order. First up, we have 295 Maplewood. You're welcome.
Yeah, thank you.
I think he was, this was, that came from PTS, right?
Yes.
For the driveway permit.
Yep.
And they advised him to come to TAC.
Well, they said, yeah, they were okay with the driveway, but he still, it was just the first step of the process.
Okay. And so, if you want to talk through what you're thinking and what...
My name is Patrick Lavoy. I have a barber shop at 295 Maplewood Ave. I'm going for a one-spot, parking spot next to the barber shop. I have a chance to buy the rest of the land from Eversource. I wanted to go through this process with the town or the city to find out if I could, if I could get that before I purchase the land, because it'd be pointless to spend the money to buy something if I couldn't actually do what I wanted to do. And so, I started this process and I'm here in front of you to ask permission to put a driveway in and see, see if we can do that.
So, there's an existing driveway there now?
There, on the backside, there's, so there's three units in that building. The two condos upstairs have two spots in the back. And then, the land allotted to Unit 1 was only seven, like seven and a half, seven feet, three inches wide. So, I needed more. So, I, originally about a year and a half ago, I went to Eversource and started the process of potentially getting an easement from them. And then, they came back eventually to see if I could just buy the whole, the whole parcel. And then, I would have more free range to do the driveway. There's a tree in the center of it. I, I want to keep the tree. The center of the tree is 11 and a half feet from the building. I've talked to a stone mason about putting a cuff around the tree and you'd have to be, I think the cuff is like 10, 10 and a half feet from the building. So, I would have plenty of space to put a driveway there if you were going off the premise of a parking spot, like in Hanaford's or something like that.
Right, our requirements are eight and a half feet wide.
Is it? Okay, yep.
But, you know, I don't know, is there anything on the building like exhaust?
There's a couple exhaust pipes towards the circle there on the back corner. I say the back, but not Maplewood, but on Marsh Lane, right there, there's a couple exhaust pipes from boilers in the basement. And that's why I wanted to go wider than the nine feet. And I was working with Eversource to get that extended space. These are drawings that I, I put together. As far as eventually, I would, you know, money being what it is, eventually, I would like cobblestone driveway and granite posts with black iron fence, like a historic fence around the space. In the, in the process of doing that, I'm sure I have to go through historical or I don't really know that process. I was just starting with the driveway and move on from there.
I think the one thing about the driveway is it's a second, it'd be a second driveway. So, you'd need to get a variance to do a second driveway.
Okay.
Have they told you that yet?
Someone had, did mention that.
All right, good.
You know, the neighbor, the neighbor next door does have a second driveway on, on his building. So, whatever variance you need, whatever process that is, I'm unclear.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd be more than willing to go.
We can help you with the application. It's an online process to submit and then you got to go to the board.
Okay.
If it's not your case, basically.
Great.
And then, you need to come back for site review here, I guess. Because it's a commercial space. So, once you get that granted.
Okay.
The concerns I have is just the dimensions, where exactly the driveway will be laid out, because we don't have, none of these exhibits is really an engineered plan showing exactly where the driveway will be. And what, it has to be eight and a half by 19?
Right, well, that's a parking spot. But, you know, is there a minimum, minimum driveway cut, I mean, is 12 feet or 10?
Yeah.
To the driveway permit?
Yeah, I looked at it with the driveway permit application and I think we're fine
with it if it can get through the zoning and planning hurdles.
Because you don't want to have the car hanging out over the property line, right?
I'm seeing a 21.5 feet deep on the shower, left side?
Yeah, but that's the property line. That's not where the parking space will be, though.
Uh-huh.
So, I think the parking space is actually going to be like the edge of this tree, right?
Yep.
And then, over what, eight and a half, whatever, nine feet to here. So, my concern is this, this, that dimension right there, that you'd be able to fit a car in there and not hang out over the property line. So, I think that's what zoning would be concerned about as well, right?
Yep.
I was shooting for a compact car. That's, that's, I'm not looking for a pickup truck to fit in there.
We don't have a compact car ordinance, so you just need to make sure the driveway is deep enough so that you're not hanging out over the driveway line.
Okay, yep.
Yeah, so you need a site plan that the Board of Adjustment can rely on and we can rely on to those dimensions.
Yes. Okay.
Because the edge of the pavement is not necessarily a property line out on the street, you know?
Yeah.
That property line maybe.
There's this car.
I don't know if that...
Just thinking about that.
So, yeah, that's why you need to have a plan showing where the property line is and where the street is and...
Is that from an engineer or a surveyor?
This guy right here. He's like me, here you go, I'm sorry. Here's a car.
John.
Yep.
John Patterson.
Patrick.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
That has a retail on the first floor, right? Is that the place?
That's where I'm at.
Yep.
Nice little building.
Yeah, 1730s.
Wow. So, PTS was okay with having a driveway, but it just needs to meet dimensional requirements.
So, if you can get the dimensional requirements, take it to the Board of Adjustment, get their approval. Then, I guess the planning board has to approve the site review application, right? Or would need a site review application? I don't see why not.
I think if it's, it depends, if it's 500 square feet...
Do you want to keep it under 500?
It can be exempt.
What's 19 and a half by 100? Is it under?
Yeah. If it's 10 feet wide, it'd have to be 50 feet long to not be exempt, so.
Oh, then it doesn't have to go to site review. So, you need your Board of Adjustment and you got traffic and safety's support and driveway permit.
Okay.
So, you need to get a variance.
Variance.
You need to get a variance, you should be okay.
Okay.
Okay?
Sounds great. Peter, can you...
Yeah, I think I'd put you in touch with Jillian.
Okay.
At some point.
Okay. Yeah, I can reach out to her.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
And we'll go forward from here.
Yep.
Great. Thanks, guys.
Thanks.
Appreciate your time.
Yep.
Good afternoon.
You as well.
All right, next up, we have 909 Islington. They were here last month for Louis' and headed to the planning board for parking condition use permit.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. John Shagner from Haley Ward, Megan Bowlen from Tinberg Properties is here, too. You can pass, take one and pass at one. Thanks for your...
Thank you.
And so, we were here for a recommendation to the planning board for mutual use parking to allow the conversion of a space at 909 Islington to the Louis' Restaurant. And after last month's meeting, we took some comments and redid a plan to show now that the lot has a change of use updating the parking lot so that all of the ADA requirements for number and location of spaces are addressed. So, we did a visual and we looked at accessible entrances and sighted ADA parking spaces so that they would be closest to the entrances. We did an update to the spreadsheet, which you, I just had it, oh, here it is, which is this document here. And used the sixth edition of the ITE parking, parking demand rates. They, they didn't change a whole lot from the fifth edition, but the spreadsheet shows the Portsmouth parking demand. First of all, on the top left is the use and then the square footage of the use, the Portsmouth parking demand with each code to the ordinance and the requirement, and then the number of spaces required. And there's totals at the bottom. So, the Portsmouth parking demand calls for 142 spaces. Then, the ITE parking demand, we used the ITE codes, except where there was not a code that was similar enough and we used the Portsmouth code. It has the requirement, the required density of parking and then the spaces, and then a total at the bottom of 136 required spaces. So, they're fairly close.
Mm-hmm.
And then, under the Portsmouth shared parking occupancy rates section of the parking ordinance, we are allowed to look at time of day requirements. So, the last two cells are occupancy rate Portsmouth and occupancy rates ITE. And each of those is based on the lower parking assignment by time of day. So, we did look at ITE and in the packet are the ITE charts that have their time of day distribution. So, ITE does it by hour. And what we did is we took anything that was in the, because Portsmouth chart, which is on the right, has only 8 to 5 and 6 to midnight. So, in the ITE, we took everything up to 5 o'clock and picked the highest hour in there, used that percentage, and then calculated based on that. And that's the ITE shared parking number table on the bottom left. And then, the Portsmouth from the ordinance shared parking table is on the right and it just has 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, general categories, and then daytime and evening assignments. So, we multiplied the Portsmouth parking requirement by the daytime and evening requirements, same for ITE. And at the bottom, the new totals of required parking based on shared use are, for Portsmouth, daytime 115, evening 86. And for ITE, daytime 107 and evening 99. So, the ITE evening was higher and that's, I think there's a lot of bleed in the ITE rates between 5 and 6. And that's what the difference is there, really, is ITE carries a lot of these through, like office, they go past 5 o'clock. So, it shows up as an evening rate. We looked at the parking, taking into account appropriate ADA spaces and we added a space and we came up with a total number of spaces of 114. So, what we're going to be asking for of the planning board is a parking condition use permit to allow us to only have 114 spaces where 115 are required for the peak. Also, we did intend to, last time, this, the applicant is now in possession and ownership is similar to map 172 Lot 6. So, we had intended to combine those, which is what we did on the chart. That's 114 is combined for the two lots. And in the meantime, we have submitted a draft of a parking lot license agreement. So, that's in your packet, too, and I would assume that that would need final legal interpretation through the planning board and legal department. We got some comments about our submission, thank you. And so, what I passed out was a slight revision to what you had in the packet. And we have identified each of the parking spaces with the appropriate detail. The top left has your ADA parking detail with signage. And then, we've identified the signposts and the call out for the detail at the various locations. There was a parking space that I added, which is south of the metal ramp, which is about in the middle of the site. For those of you that go to Loaded Question Brewery, it's in front of their space. And I had thought that could be an ADA, but I think the comment is that people would be unloading in an aisle. So, if you look to the left, there is a space which can easily be made available and appropriate to ADA. And it's at the corner of a row of parking that is parallel and then perpendicular. So, there's an existing unutilized spot that could be the unloading area for an ADA space. And then, all we need to do is provide a porous walkway. And it, it is very flat, gets over to the ADA entrance of Loaded Question quite easily. So, in that case, the one parking space should still be appropriate and the count stayed the same. We also show the dumpster locations. There's currently a dumpster that is attached to 951 Islington, not on their property, and that will be moved or removed. So, the 16 parking spaces that show under the 10 and the 4 on the left side of the drawing, there are 16 spaces there. There was a space that wasn't available because you'd be parking in front of the dumpster, but that dumpster does not service 909, and so, that will be removed. And then, we re-looked at the architectural plans and indeed, the entrance ramp for ADA accessibility to the proposed Louis' Restaurant fits well within the space that I outlined here. So, there's a full lay down area for, is that the way to say that, Eric? Unloading area, it's a proper...
Access aisle.
Access aisle, thank you. So, there's a proper access aisle there. And that's it. Hopefully, those adjustments are acceptable and we look for a positive recommendation from this...
Did you confirm that all the ADA spaces that you have noted meet the proper slope requirements for ADA spaces? Do you actually physically measure the ground and make sure that they're flat enough to meet code?
I did not use the slopeometer, but I gotta say, none of them are going to be too steep. I don't know if you eyeballed something otherwise.
I did not eyeball anything, I just, you know, somewhat...
It's very flat lot.
It's straight, yeah, I know the lot is flat. But, if you could sometime, before you go to the planning board...
Yep.
Go out there with a slope level...
Yep.
And make sure that all the spaces are less than 2%.
Mm-hmm.
It would be great.
Yep, can do that.
Dumpsters have to be 10 feet from lot lines, so just, if, these are going to be removed?
So, so one of them is there now.
Okay.
The one on the right, it's currently a construction dumpster, but there's, I think that's where they kept the regular dumpster. Then, on the left, the one on the left is currently a dumpster, too.
And that's going away, or...
We were proposing to leave it there, but...
But it's not, it's existing.
There's a dumpster there now, yeah.
And then, is the owner of 959, 959 Boys LLC or PWED 2 LLC?
That needs to be updated on the plan. 959 Boys sold to...
Okay.
PWED, yes. That will be updated.
All right.
Can we back that dumpster real quick? The second one, the one to the left? I'm looking at the picture that's in the packet. And I'm looking at the plan. I'm just concerned that, you know, what's in the picture, there's a one, it's pretty small.
As opposed to having each one...
And it doesn't block that ability to turn there through, you know, between 951 and 933, which is the way most people get out of there? So, the, between 951 and 933, there's parking, it's not shown here, but people park on the right side of that against the building of 95, 933. So, there is no aisle, the aisle is clear. Yeah, you can see in the aerial, see, they park against the building. So, if the dumpster, and you can see the dumpster that's there now, it's right there. And that's not really in the way, but looking at your plan, you know, it looks like that dumpster area...
My understanding was that the red dumpster is what got moved to create the additional parking space?
Yes.
So, that would also move over?
Yes.
Okay.
I think you could put the red dumpster there and that might be something that Tinberg offers, but otherwise, unless there's an agreement, it's used by 951. So, they'll have to find a place on their own lot to put it. I guess my concern is, I'm looking at this... Yeah, the sizing of it, the scale of it. The size of the dumpster, where it's located, not only to make that turn, but also just to continue on with that slight jog there. Yeah. Yeah, we can do a better job of scaling it on and update the plan. Because I think you could put two, three yarders, turn, so you come at it this way and it would be the size of a parking, a parking, a parked car, so they could fit that way. Do you know what I mean? Yeah. And I can show that clearer on the plan and sure should have done that. I think that's the only, if we, if we go in there with a truck, we either got to continue down or we got to make that turn between 951 and 933 in order to get out. So, I wouldn't want to see that blocked. Right. I'm not sure that, there could never be a fence put up there, because the more formally approved and accessed, easemented ways are on the left and on the right. Not sure there's agreements with... There's only one way in right now that has an access easement on it. On the left, yeah. As we're looking at it on the right. But certainly, the people at 865 on the right side are using 909 as an access. I just don't want to see it get worse than it is now, because it's not good now. Yeah, okay, yep. Understand.
So, I'm not sure that that additional handicap spot in the lot to the left counts as a handicap spot as a lot on, or on the right. So, I know that the left lot here has the one spot for the 25 parking spaces and that makes sense. But then, the additional handicap spot should be in that right lot.
Which is why they wanted to get a parking agreement.
Yeah.
Get it to us.
Okay.
Yeah, so if that, we hope that was covered in the parking agreement.
Okay.
To share the parking.
Is that...
Yes.
Still ADA?
Yeah.
Yeah, all right.
So, that, also, if that's good, then, then we'll leave it there. And, because the alternative would be to put it next to that ramp and you'd lose a spot. So, we'd just be asking for one more, instead of one, we're down one, we'd be down two. But I think that's a good spot to access the, the ramp that services the Loaded Question, because from that spot, they don't even have to cross any aisles at all.
No, agree.
Yeah.
As long as it meets code.
Yeah, it's real flat and the ramp actually has...
Whatever takes care of the parking lot's going to need to get the message so they can't put snow there now.
True.
Yes.
Well, they got to clear the snow in between two large piles of snow, so that has access.
Yep.
For the parking calculations for the table, the ordinance calls for adding up the individual uses and then rounding and then adding. So, I don't know if these were all just added with the fractions before rounding up, but if you could just check that. Like, all the business could be, all the business uses could be added together and then rounded if it's a fraction. But then, like, the restaurant would, the 30.7 would go to 31. Probably the Dallas would go, well, Dallas is 13, but...
So, I believe that the, it's a spreadsheet and the 142 is the sum of...
Which is the sum, yeah.
But it's expressed to the nearest foot, or nearest whole number, sorry. So...
So, yeah, the ordinance says...
No, if you go through that and, because you're going to get some that go up and some that go down, I think, right?
Right. Well, I don't know if they go down, you always round up.
Can't go down, you always go up, but...
Can't have less than space.
It says the, the parking spaces shall be, the sum of the requirements for the various individual uses computed separately. And then, when there's a fraction, you round up. So, you could take all the business uses, add those up, and then, if there's a fraction, round up. And then, if, the other individual uses, you would just round up if there's a fraction?
But always up.
Always up.
But you'd only have to round up once if you did the sum total of all the businesses first.
No, that's what I'm saying, you're saying that the uses have to be categorized separately.
The uses, yes.
And those all get rounded up and then they get summarized at...
Right, but there's like five different businesses could have the same use, so therefore...
That's true.
Right, that's what I'm saying. So, rather than...
There's three different categories.
Yep.
That need to be added and rounded before they can be, then, before they can be then added.
And it'll be what it'll be, because you, yeah, yeah.
It might not.
Might not.
So, it's going to add five spaces.
Okay.
In the Portsmouth total.
Right, right, but you're, you're using the shared, but just to have it be...
So, it'd be like 141. Just quickly adding up all the round ups.
Right.
Have to tell the spreadsheet, I suppose I could say always go up to the nearest. There must be a formula for that.
Round up, yeah, probably a round up.
You're just going to separate your, the categories.
Yeah.
So, you got to tell the cell to always round up and then we'll be good.
Well, only when you summarize the categories.
It'd be quicker to do it with your pencil.
That defeats the purpose of having a spreadsheet. But I, I'm a little bit confused, because these are all business uses in one form or another, but you say there's different categories, like, do I use the categories here, residential office, the shared categories or...
Well...
Sorry.
Like, I think the brewery would be different. The brewery and the Louis' could probably be added together.
Restaurant and brewery.
But the, all the ones you have there vacant and, you know...
Office.
Office. I would think the salon would be separate.
Salon is gone. Salon didn't come through, they didn't sign there.
Radio station would be separate.
The salon's there, the medical salon.
Oh, the new salon is...
The medical, yeah, yeah, sorry. It might be three, three or four categories, but, yeah.
Make an office, salon, radio station, those can all be lumped. Then, you got the performance space, so that I'm sure is...
Right, that'd probably be separate.
Oh, yeah.
As far as methodology goes, it's, I agree with that.
Right.
All the calculations, it's just rounding.
Is it, are you able to make a recommendation that it's probably going to be three spaces more or if it's, it's not going to be huge?
Yeah, we're just supposed to look at the parking demand analysis and find... Yeah, we're just supposed to look at the parking demand analysis and find it acceptable. So if we're good with that, that's really all we're supposed to look at.
With the adjustment.
Right now.
What you did.
Right.
Right. With the adjustment.
With the adjustment.
And I don't know how it's gonna play out in the other final line, the one fifteen daytime, so anyway, you know, it may, may be seventeen, might be eighteen.
But anyways, well, Portsmouth is not really demand, it's the requirements. A demand analysis is really the IT numbers.
Right.
It really doesn't matter what Portsmouth parking requirements are, you're, we're looking at what your actual demand is, which is IT.
Okay, yeah, I try, and that's the way it says it in the ordinance, right? It says you work at the demand side, but you use the Portsmouth timing apportionment.
Yeah.
So in that case, we might, if it be, we might meet the parking.
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering, do they meet the parking without the conditional use on the lot? Or do you have to go on the other lot, no matter what?
Well, we gotta combine it, so I think that needs the.
Yeah, that's still.
Any board approval for, for the combining.
Combined parking.
Because there's only eighty-nine on the, eighty-eight or eighty-nine, depending on how you go.
You say that now they're in shared ownership?
No, there's a proposed parking lease agreement in the packet.
Oh, it's, yeah, I saw that, but the ownership, you said something about the owners.
Yes, the owners are, are similar. Similar, same.
But not exactly the same, they don't want to combine the lots?
They don't want to merge the lots, no.
So then, yeah, you need it.
Yeah, I think they're, two of the three are the same, partner, you know, they're partnerships, and two of the three are the same. You don't want to merge them. At this time.
You have just more, right?
I'm good.
All right. Great. So, yeah, if you do have revised anything, if you get it to me Thursday afternoon, just because the packet's going out Friday.
Yep. As in this Thursday?
As in this Thursday.
Not some other Thursday, but this Thursday?
This Thursday.
Okay. Can do.
Thank you.
All right.
All right, next, we'll move slightly down the parking lot, so nine twenty-one.
Pretty close.
Is it Ampet?
Nope, we haven't met.
Hey, how are you?
Hey.
So we have, I'm still John Chaglin from Haley Ward, and Doug Bowlen is still here.
Good to hear.
Yeah.
I do have a handout for this application also, and. So. This is the Ampet, Ampet with an E, gas station site that if you've traveled down Islington Street, which I'm sure you have.
Once or twice?
Yeah, one more, sorry. You need one more, is there no extra ones from that site? About ten.
Oh, yeah, that's last.
Yeah, here's one more, who needs it? Yeah.
Oh, yeah, pass it back.
Sorry, okay. So the site is nine twenty-one Islington Street, and the Ampet gas station, I believe that recently, you might have seen some activity there, which was a tank removal. Not a gas station anymore, apologize to the neighborhood that liked to buy their gas there, but it's no longer gonna be a gas station. The proposal is convert that building shell into a restaurant, and I believe that you're the restaurateur. Proposed restaurateur is here, and so we have an existing conditions plan, boundary survey, an overall plan, and then a site plan, which later has on the screen. And the site plan, right now, there's areas along Islington Street that are shown here as kind of shaded, if you look at the plan. And that shading represents an infill back to sidewalks. So currently, the Ampet gas station had a very large curb opening on two sides of a center sidewalk safety island that has the crosswalk location. So the proposal here is to close the right, entire right drive entrance, and turn it back to sidewalk, and then narrow down the left side entrance a little bit, and that would be the only access directly off of Islington Street. So you would come in and then we're.
Is that really necessary?
That second entrance?
Yeah.
I think if you don't, you end up with a dead end that requires lots of turning around movements. For the parking, dead end parking, but we can talk about that, maybe not, maybe that's.
Which one are you saying, they don't, the internal one?
It gets more parking.
Destroying the left driveway too.
That might be possible.
So just the one internal, or inside?
The right driveway is obvious, but the left one seems unnecessary, maybe.
Could be true. The building stays where it is, we put some sidewalk around it, a little green space in front. It shows the primary entrance, a secondary entrance in the back for deliveries, with a delivery zone in the back parking area, a dumpster that's accessed through that delivery zone, and then there'd be outdoor seating. Of course, we would add some street trees between the new portion of the sidewalk, and a row of parking perpendicular to Islington Street, so it'd have some tree separation. There's the ADA required space, the rest, the building itself is twelve, thirteen hundred and forty-one square feet, so we would need fourteen spaces, and we're showing fifteen. So I did hand out some things that I want to talk about today, but before, are there any general questions so far, other than Dave's?
Are you planning on the external grease trap for the restaurant use?
Yes, yes, definitely, gotta show that, good, good point.
This is flush curb, meaning that the sidewalk, you just have some, it flush with the, with the driveway, parking?
At the building, yes.
So there's no raised.
Correct. We could just lower it for the entrance, but we gotta have the, the straight on entrance be flush for the ADA. So I handed out some drawings, the first is the city's utility plan for the Islington Street redo. Just as a point of reference, that's where we got information about the street utilities from. The street was recently redone. And then the second is a utility plan, and I marked it up in blue with some changes. The entrance that is from the nine oh nine property on the right, in our original design, you know, we, we had that fifty feet from Islington Street. And the fifty feet was me, is measured from the, you know, edge of traveled way. But it kind of creates a vast amount of unnecessary pavement. So I wanted to discuss the possibility of moving that entrance down so that it aligns, the aisle aligns with that perpendicular parking to Islington Street. And that way, we can save a lot of paved space. So the blue line in the back moves down, and there'd be a lot more green space on the lot. And with David's suggestion of the closing of the other aisle, it would make it probably get three, two, at least two more parking spaces. And more green space along the front. Or you could look at whether that left side extension would allow another street parking space.
Can't do that, it's crosswalk there.
What's that?
Crosswalk.
No, but I mean, I think to the, as you go by, the crosswalk island, the fog line is away from the curb, and there's parking in front of the building next door. So you could theoretically, if you closed that, you could add some on-street parking, I think. See the two parking spaces, the lefty arrow?
Yeah.
If you closed that other entrance, you could probably put two more street parking spaces there. I, I, I prefer to have the driveway on Islington rather than the side driveway, but.
Yeah, I guess I got lost in translation here. I thought they were gonna have one driveway off Islington. Am I looking at the right plan? Because if you. I don't understand what you're trying to do.
We were going through, David.
Yeah, I saw that, yeah.
And then they want to come in through, sorry, leave that one open?
Yeah.
And then also have one through their signs right there.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Yeah.
And then they're talking about.
That'll be a great change.
Swapping driveways.
Oh, I don't know what that's about.
I don't know.
Just moving that down.
It was two.
Moving this one front to back.
No, there was one off Islington and one access out to the nine oh nine property, so it's not a second driveway. It's just an access point.
Previously, there was two off.
Oh, yes, yes, yeah, for the Ampet. Yeah, yeah, we're reducing one, for sure.
I think it's confusing, because you're telling us you're changing something from something we've never seen in the first place.
All right, I'm, I'm bringing it up today, and sorry for the confusion, but if you look at the plan that's up on the board, all I'm saying is, you see where I got the crosswalk?
Down to there.
And that crosswalk?
Yeah.
And that, that's fifty feet, that access point is fifty feet from the Islington Street fog line. Which I'm not sure if it applies here or not, but if it was like a residential lot driveway, it's two street intersections, you'd be fifty feet up, so if we could move that down to be aligning with the back of the parking spaces, move that whole thing in the crosswalk down, and move all the parking spaces down, we end up with a lot less pavement and the same number of parking spaces. That's what I was trying to show in this markup.
But my concern is how the traffic will stack up and block it, or, you know, someone's waiting to make a left turn in, and it's blocked, and you got traffic coming in behind them, you know, it creates a lot more congestion near the intersection here. The closer you get to the intersection, the worse it gets.
Right, right.
That's why you would want the fifty feet, is for a little stacking.
Yep. Exactly.
I, I understand your point too, of the, the aisle lining, but.
But if you just had the entrance off Islington and did away with that entrance altogether, you could achieve the same thing.
Yeah, we could do that.
Yeah.
But then you'd have a dead end parking aisle, right?
But you could.
Oh, you couldn't get out?
Well, you just have to come off the edge of it a little bit to create that enough backup space. You know, it's a lot more freedom of movement to have both aisles.
Yeah.
Do you have any access agreements to travel across that entrance to the right, onto the other parcel?
No, but once again, the ownership is similar, so I think that's not gonna be a problem.
All right.
We can get that, so that can be a, definitely a condition.
Slowly understanding.
The trees in the front. You'll need to go to Trees and Greenery for that, probably?
Yes, probably. Nope, nope, that would be part of this.
For what?
Trees and Greenery?
For what?
The trees in the front yard, on the street, street trees?
Yeah.
They would be on city property, so.
They're adding them, there's nothing there now, I think.
Right, we're adding some landscaping that doesn't exist. So right now, if you look at the pictures that I supplied, there's no landscaping at all in front of the Ampet.
No.
So we're showing, constructing the sidewalk, and that gives us enough room to put in a, a, a a nice five-foot wide landscaped area where we can put trees, and then I'm showing low bushes closer to the intersection.
I think the, the driveway that gets closed off, we'd want to see the brick treatment going through there, the brick strip, be consistent with the rest of corridor.
Sure would. Brick in the front, and then there's concrete in the back.
I walked it sort of concrete.
Yep.
Yeah. So would we want, I think I got this wrong though, if I'm looking at the picture, we'd probably want the trees between the sidewalk and the fog line, we'd want to make that a, a landscape area. And then the sidewalk back up to the property line, right? Got it? And then the other thing about this utility plan that I handed out is, in here, it shows a, a drain stub that was left during construction. And so on the next sheet, grading plant sheet, I was wondering if we could stick a catch basin at the end of that pipe, or if there was another purpose for that pipe.
It's for the roof drain for the building.
So that would be a roof drain for building connection? Okay.
Is this, this is reusing the existing building, or is it a new building?
Yes.
Yeah.
The, the.
The rating?
The occupant load. The occupant load? No.
I don't think so.
Around fifty? Thirty-nine square feet?
All right, so we'd probably want to know if it's gonna be fifty or more, or less than fifty, because that will.
Is that the cutoff?
That's a cutoff for a few things, but including number of exits.
That's a hint right there, if I've ever heard one.
Thought he's gonna have an exit at the back.
Yeah, I think they're, we'll just have to show it if it's required.
Yeah.
If it would need to be sprinkled or not.
I believe they've engaged an architect recently, but they'll be an architect, so.
We'll have to look at local ordinances as well, when it comes to that.
And then, pardon my ignorance, once again, back to this flush curb, is there a tip down then for the wheelchair to go in, or?
It wouldn't be with the flush curb.
Oh, so it's flush to the sidewalk, to the driveway?
Yeah, flush, flush to the driveway.
So then there's no protection, there's no barriers, no vehicle protection to the building? You can just drive right into the, to the building without bumping a curb first, is that?
Just like on TV.
Just like on TV? I know there's been other projects that we've been pretty clear about not allowing that. I know Nick Grekner was very upset one day, we made him put ballards in front of all the.
I remember that day.
That was. Outdoor seating. They were having outdoor seating.
It was a no dormer talk, too.
Do you have no concerns then about a curbless?
Well, not with parking not up against, I'm not really that concerned about it.
It's a tight parking lot, but yeah, that's fine, yeah.
If there was outdoor seating, that would be a different situation, they're not protected by the.
The outdoor seating is gonna be behind the building.
Right, which is kind of protected.
Which is protected, yeah.
Conditioning aside there.
Yeah.
Proposed outdoor seating too, but there's landscaping, I guess.
Okay, yeah.
I also.
What's that?
I also remember that conversation.
So if we, if we did reintroduce a curb though, which is probably appropriate, but then we have to tip it down at the, at the door entrance, that's not a problem.
Right, I mean, I'm not saying to ask, well, I don't know, you know, if it meets the regulations, it meets the regulations.
All right, that was a different situation, I'm not really super concerned about that yet.
So the parking in the front will need a variance. And the outdoor dining is a conditional use permit in this district. And the dumpster needs to be ten feet from the rear, or it needs a variance. But if you move, if you move the parking forward, you probably have room to slide that forward.
Right. Would, would we be okay with a dead-end Islington only? I guess that-
If you have, if you have a way to turn around.
We have a way to turn around, yeah. Are you opposed to where it is now with the through? Through line?
What's that? The-
Are you against the way it is now with the, with the through?
Which one, the original, with 50 feet back, or the-
The 50-foot-back one, yeah.
Yeah, I would prefer it 50 feet back.
Yeah. That would be okay.
Yeah.
The other alternative is just a lot of pavement, but if you just came in and went 90 degrees, you might get, you'd get the same amount of parking. You'd have a corner that didn't work if you just set at the two at the corner, you started with spaces parallel to Islington. But you'd end up with the same number of spaces. Unless freedom of movement. This allows people who don't understand it's a handicap spot to come in and drive out.
Not to add on to your list, but one of the spots has to be converted to a landscaped island, because you have more than 10.
I wanna see that on other plans.
What do you mean?
Is that a variance?
You did it on the 815 Lafayette.
It's in the character districts for zoning ordinance.
What's that?
Oh yeah, you did it for the tour project.
Eight-way, too.
Yes.
The intention is to have landscaping within a certain-
It didn't happen on 785 Lafayette.
You, you might need, when you do the layout of the restaurant, you might be able to reduce the parking requirement, depending on-
The unloading area is not a spot.
The kitchen, you know, kitchen and storage and-
So it's not 10?
There's 15 spots.
I mean, you don't have to take that in, it's not GFA, 1 per 100 GFA, it's 100, 1 per 100 seating area? I don't think they wanna reduce the parking anyway.
Okay.
So is that a variance, or is that a site plan?
If it's in zoning, it's a variance.
Zoning ordinance.
It's in the zoning ordinance, so that's another variance for more than 10 spaces without a-
Without one landscaped island for 10 space.
So the landscape island that's in front of the spaces doesn't count as landscape island? Just curious.
I don't think so, because it's supposed to break up in between spaces.
Okay.
Is it 10 continuous spaces, is that what it is?
It doesn't-
It says parking lots shall contain one landscaped island for every 10 parking spaces.
So it doesn't have to be in between, like 5 and 5? It can just be somewhere else in the parking lot?
Oh, so we have two landscaped islands we're creating on the ends of the-
Yeah, if they, if one or both of them add up to 325 square feet, then that would meet the minimum dimensions.
Utility.
Everything's new.
What's that?
Everything's new.
Everything's new?
As long as it only a fire suppression system, then we'll be milling and paving Islington Street.
Oh, we don't do that.
Stay under 50.
Under 50.
Reusing the existing stubs?
Of course, they're brand-new.
Well, just to confirm.
Yeah.
Alright. Does this lot have gas, or do you plan on it? There's gas on the far side of Islington.
The gas is down there.
Gas is down this way. Oh, there's a gas station.
That's a question, yeah, so you probably do, right? Yeah. Yeah, plan on gas.
Okay, so that is across the street, unless the lot already has it? Louis has gas, right? I don't have gas.
That's a good question, we'll find out.
Okay. Yeah, that might need some milling of the road if you do need to cross Islington with it.
Was gas shown in the? It must be here somewhere.
Your, your existing conditions plan doesn't show the utilities around either.
Right, we were in the process of bringing in the stuff from the, from the city. The utility plan that I handed out today does have some updated-
The gas lines across the street underneath the other sidewalk, on the other side of the road, yes. You gotta dig through the landscaping, dig through the sidewalk, dig through Islington Street.
There is-
Dig through the new sidewalk.
There's gas here. It shows possibly come this way.
What?
There's gas.
Oh, yeah, off their service, if it's big enough, next door.
Yeah.
If only you knew the owner.
You mean the 875 has a gas crossing?
Well, 909 has gas going up that little driveway to the right of, of this lot where you wanna put your exits, so if there's-
It's a small building.
If their service is large enough, I can't speak for you until, but-
Right.
Yep. Gotcha.
Good question to ask, though.
We, we will. And we know the owner of that other lot, so.
Oh, good to help.
If Finster was here, he'd say one more thing.
Yeah. But he's not.
He's gone for quite some time, huh? Has he taken a big trip?
Yeah, he's on a big trip.
Big trip?
Yep.
Big life event?
Yep.
Would the signs at the corner at the driveway be brought onto private property? I think, looks like they're on city property.
Uh, if I showed a little sign, I thought I put it on the lot, in that little area at the end, well? If it's on-
Oh, the Ross Engineering sign.
Yes, yes.
Oh, the sign for 909 is existing. The one in the picture? Look at the picture, it shows the post and, with all the signs.
Yeah, Ross and radio station.
Yeah, that's for 909.
You're saying it's blocking the site distance?
No, no, it's just, it'd be nice if it was not in the, the city.
It'd be nice if it wasn't there?
That, that signpost has gotten like six variances over the years, so I don't think it's going anywhere.
Were any of them licensed from the city council?
Well, it's not on city land, I don't think. It's on private property.
Your, your existing-
It must be a different, oh, no, 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 the, because they're on the-
It's on the utility pole?
He's talking about these signs.
The-
It's not-
Those signs are in the right-of-way.
They're on the utility pole, I think.
No, it's a post, but it's next to the utility pole.
Oh, it looks like they're on the utility pole.
Yeah.
They probably have a private lake signs.
Yeah, you wanna find the place, yeah.
So is it, is it top secret, or is it too early, what type of restaurant or food?
I don't know, yeah, I got, a lot of it depends on how many people could fit in there, and how much, what the check average has to be in order to make the that problem all work. But I'd like it to be casual, you know, more like a I don't know, nicer than Lexi's, but not, like, nicer than Lexi's in the street, but not as nice as like Botanica's, I don't know.
Okay, so, but Amer- American, does it steam then? Okay, yeah, yeah.
Hopefully ice cream, fried chicken, stuff like that.
Nice.
Kids.
Alright.
See if we can make it work.
Not a bagel shop.
Not a bagel shop. That's my neighborhood already, so I'm not really, see what happens with that driveway situation, but, good times.
Alright, thanks. Okay, thank you for your time.
Do you wanna keep this, Adam? Is that helpful or not? No, just taking. Thank you.
I know.
Interesting.
Tasty, tasty little ones.
Next we have 86 Farm Lane.
You're up.
I'm on the shelf. This is my shelf. Director Eric Weinribaltes, engineering, Derek Durbin with me, the project attorney. We're here for a work session, we have an application before the Board of Adjustment for zoning relief to construct two new lots behind Jeanette McDonald, Jeanette McMaster property. I believe we were, went for variances earlier, and, with different configuration, and also through the process that the, there's a city right-of-way through there, Paper Street, and went through a process of wanting to quickclaim that and return that to McMaster. Because it is improved, there's a sewer line in there, the city was not gonna relinquish that, that right-of-way. So, what we've done is, we're creating a 22-foot-wide roadway to service the two rear lots, generally in that right-of-way, but along Farm Lane, we're kicking it to the east to stay away from the, the butter, the Ford's property, because one is, they have built improvements in there, there, there are driveways in there, there are sheds in there, and there's a hedge row in there. So we're trying to align this roadway on, in a manner so that it, it doesn't impact the butter to the west, and we can provide the frontage to, and access to the two rear lots. So we're proposing a 22-foot-wide road, come down, they're gonna put an easement on the rear lot to allow a turnaround, and, so that you can get emergency vehicles in, in and out of there, and provide an easement to allow the roadway to be constructed and sloped to extend on to the two, two of the parcels. That's what we have in the, the orange, and then the green is the area that's outside the right-of-way that will be part of the roadway. What we haven't shown on here is proposed grading, the, the site does slope down from Farm Lane down to the rear lot, so we're proposing, we haven't gone through a design process, but what we're expecting to do is a closed drainage system, probably super-elevate it to the east, and then create some stormwater managed devices on, on the up gradient and lower gradient sides of the, the turnaround area. So it would be partially in the right-of-way and partially on private property. Wanted to make it 22 feet, because it's servicing two homes, it's widened up on, for both properties. There is a possibility, we haven't had any conversations with New England Marine, that it could be extended to service their properties as well. The right-of-way does continue all the way up to Betty's Dream, and that property is fully developed, so we don't anticipate that it would ever become a through road. So we're here looking for your guidance before we go to the zoning board. Did I miss anything?
No, that's it. We had a prior zoning submission about a year ago, so it's been going on for quite a while. They laid out three lots, kinda like you see them now. Only difference was, at that time, we were assuming the city would release its rights in what's referred to as Long Meadow Lane, which is Paper Street. It turns out there are utilities running through there, so the city denied the request for the release, which is then bringing us back to now this proposal, which, for all intents and purposes, the lots are laid out the same, it's just the roadway is really the, what we see is the, the big issue that requires your input before we continue on.
Alright, thanks.
The interesting thing, this is just a historical note, is that the way the three lots are laid out here on paper is basically follows the original subdivision plan for this neighborhood from the 1950s, so. We've laid them out the same way, it's just the only difference being how Long Meadow Lane is laid out at this point on the plan, due to the fact that everybody in that area has been treating the property as theirs to a certain point, you know, including Jeanette McMaster, who obviously can't see here, but if you were to look at that, where that street is proposed, she's, you know, basically been using, I think that area is like sort of like a dirt driveway, and she's got, there's vegetation if you look at the GIS or the aerials on it.
Approved?
So you'd need to go to the city council and give that, make that land part of the right-of-way? That's gotta be one step process.
So, my thought was that it would be an easement, but it would still be the city's rights to it, because if somehow-
Yes, correct.
Or be a structure, they'd have to accept it, but that's-
Yeah.
Have to accept the easement, yes.
Right, because if somehow that other parcel comes around, opens up, then we can realign it, and it wouldn't make sense to keep that, that alignment.
And then, you'd have to build the road to public works standards.
Correct.
The street, and then public works would have to take it over, basically, or use it.
Right, because, as we had that discussion, you would, the intent would have been for it to be a private
Yep.
way, but it's in the public right-of-way, so you can't have that.
And so the, and then the comment that the road, the easement in favor of the city for the turnaround, if the road is extended, I think you'd have to have something like all the way through, like just a minor extension, wouldn't-
Well, it, it depends, it's-
Until such a time as another turnaround is provided, or-
That was what my, yeah, thought was, is the next person down
Yeah.
might just build one lot or two lots, and at that point, they would need to put their turnaround in.
Actually, CURE is an issue for that, that lot behind us, that's owned by New England Marine. They don't have, I mean, in theory, they have access through their other property, but they have no, this is a separate lot that they own, and they don't have any direct access to this lot as it is now, but those conversations haven't been had about what they intend to do. Their attorneys just said, "Great, I'm sure they'll love it." Thanks for, for doing that for us.
So this would be a private street?
No, it can't be.
It can't be, yeah.
But it wouldn't connect?
Correct, and it can't, because Betty's Dream-
Street name, then.
Yeah, we would have to have a new name for it.
I know Jeanette has ideas, so. Betty's Dream, do they own the other end of it?
Still shows up on, as a right-of-way on-
It's a right-of-way all the way through.
I have no idea what their ownership situation is, but it's clearly, it's part of their parking lot. Yeah, it's part of their driveway and parking lot equipment. That would be really a bad sell to make that an open, a through road.
What the hell?
Yeah. Didn't our bike pit plan?
These have garages as part of them, is like drive-in, or, or is it, you know, so in other words, or was the plan to park vehicles in front of the structures, the proposed structure, proposed dwellings? Driving garage or in front, or?
We haven't gotten that far yet, but it would, it would be my assumption that houses around here now, we're not building them without garages, so you'd probably have a garage and then a parking stall in, in front. The one, the back lot, clearly- The back lot, clearly, that driveway would have to be long enough so that we're not impeding the easement with the...
Turnaround.
The turnaround here.
But those are just building envelopes, so the house could be set back in that.
Of course, yeah, those are just setback lines, yeah.
Correct. And I can separate that out a little, I mean, we just showed how, you know, we extended the easement beyond the paved surface just for maintenance, but if you wanted, you know, a five-foot setback from that, we could...
I was just curious, yeah.
And do you need a turning template or radius, do you think you can get in there to turn around a fire truck?
Is this designed to the code of ahead turnaround?
We, I have not put a full turn, turning templates on it, and I will need to, when we get into the engineering end, make sure everything fully works.
The IFC has the design minimums for different types of turnarounds, if it meets that, then it'll be fine.
Okay.
It's in one of the annexes, I can't remember, I think it's a D. IFC.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, it's our intent is to, should we be fortunate to get the variances that we would go into full engineering drawings for the roadway to the town standard, and any changes, you know, to the easement would need to be modified, and including addressing the stormwater management.
So would the future drawings show the lot lines pulled back to the edge of that Paper Street then? These lot lines are still showing.
Does that work? We're still showing it to the center line.
Are, yeah, well, that is, I mean, by law, the boundaries are accurately shown here, I guess they're in purple, I don't have my glasses on, but that, that would remain, it's just there's going to be the easement to the city for the street.
An easement right of way, not a fee simple right of way.
Correct, yeah, rather than fee simple ownership, because that gets into a whole nother host of issues, but that was what we discussed, was just an easement instead of fee title.
Right, but the lot still ends at the edge of that Paper Street, right?
No, it, to the center line. So it's 50-foot wide, Paper Street, ownership is to the center line.
Yeah, and the easement's going to have to be to the city and to anybody who uses the right of way, so...
Yes.
Yeah.
Correct.
Public way, basically.
Yeah, I think that, this went around for several months, you know, obviously everybody's been looking at this with the city, with us, trying to figure out how to deal with this Paper Street issue. Every situation involving Paper Street's a little bit different. With this one, there's never been, it's never been used for any form of access by any of the abutting properties, except the people that basically owned the center line have used it for their own lots for landscaping and other purposes, then the city has used it for the utility purposes, so in theory, the city has, already has an easement for maintaining and accessing those utilities, and the owner's own fee simple to the, where the purple boundaries are shown.
So for future utility extensions to those lots, you'd plan to go down that Paper Street then, I would assume?
Yeah, for like electric and water, water appears to go down, we don't have information on if it's just servicing the Ford property, or if it's mainly runs the whole land.
But I imagine you'd put a hydrant in too on that.
Yeah, I would think that you're going to want a hydrant.
I think as long as it's built to the city standards for a roadway, I don't have an issue with it.
So the road section would be, but obviously we're not, we're building, we're proposing a narrower street. Like curving, pavement, gravels, all that would be built to it. And we'd probably be requesting not to build a sidewalk.
I mean, I think you got to get the city council on board.
Right.
So, well, is that the first step, or is it the O A is the first step?
Yeah, I mean, right, because then it changes the whole situation, I mean, there's still, in theory, two lots by right, it's just, we've proposed that. The need for the variance relief relates to having three lots basically in their original configurations from the 1950 subdivision plan.
Any other thoughts for us in advance of the Board of Adjustment?
That's this month, right?
Yeah, 22nd.
Would you say that strip of green represents?
What's...
A green strip that's part of the 20...
A green strip is the area of the proposed pavement that is outside of the existing right of way today.
Outside of the right of way.
Yeah. And then we're extending that easement 10 feet beyond for grading and any utilities that might be outside of that. So it's 14 feet going on to the two parcels, and it tapers as it swings back.
So you're getting a variance for the existing house as well?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, we need a couple, all right.
All right. Other comments, I guess, at this time?
About as straightforward as it gets.
No, just kidding.
Yeah.
Really?
That's why it took us a year to get here, to this work session.
April 4th.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Jern, for today, thanks.